I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay. Councillors, first, before we jump into the matter, we have some minutes to approve for minutes from June 6th. Any motion to approve minutes from June 6th?
Motion to approve?
Second.
Motion made in second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Yes, have it. And see a motion to accept the minutes from June 7th.
So moved.
That should be made.
Second?
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
You guys have it. Councillor, this evening, we have before us matters that deal with education and the library and other human services issues. We're just gonna go in order and go from there. Everybody go with that? First one up, I see here in the audience, we have the Council on Aging. And we have the Director of Council on Aging here with us, Martha Velez. How you doing?
Good evening, everyone.
See what page we're on?
Forty-six.
Forty-six?
One forty-six.
One forty-six. I know everybody's anxious to get back to Hispanic Week, so we'll get everybody out of there. One forty-six?
One forty-six.
Council on Aging. Counselor René?
Hmm?
Counselor Kino? Okay. So, I think if you look at one forty-six, that's the roll-up at the higher level. Then you go to one forty-seven, that's a more clearer breakout. I believe what we're seeing in there is the same items that they have before, the just-in-case, they settle agreements, money. But just on personal services, purchase of services, it looks like you're spending a little less on energy there. I don't know if you asked, do they have that taken out, or they just took it out in the budget process?
No, I've asked to take it off, because we've been doing a great job in energy-saving and making sure that our thermostats are set, so it sets off, turns on. And we also were luckily enough to be part of the new system where, we call it the Big Brother, but the computer turns on and off the the air conditioning and the heating system, so we're hoping that that'll cut back by ten percent.
Cool. I wish you can help other directors do the same with that. That'd be nice. So can you tell us what's going on with your staff here? There's, it looks like there's a lot of money moving around, and are you net?
No.
Loss?
Status quo.
Equal amount?
Actually, there's one additional part.
One.
Alright, so not status quo?
No. What happened is, as I came before you in previous years, we have a lot of our seniors who go through a senior training program, and they're through the National Senior Aid Program. And what it is, is for elders sixty and over that are low-income to be able to have some kind of income. And what they do is they become part of a training program. And one of our senior aides, this program is only supposed to be for two years, was on the program for six years, because the city of Lawrence was in such financial constraints. And so, this year, they asked if I could please try to make sure that we pick up this senior to be part of our program, and he's a program assistant, and what he's done is, he was done in September of last year, I came before the mayor and I asked him, and with Mark and the mayor, we were able to get an appropriation and put him on in November of last year, I believe. And so now it's added to the budget, and that's what you see. It's someone that works nineteen hours a week for ten dollars an hour.
So you, last year, you had two program assistants, a Hispanic outreach coordinator, and a coordinator of elder services?
No. Last year I had three. It's typo. I mean, it's just the way that it was printed out. The computer was picking up.
It's okay. So you had one part-time help, money?
I did. And Hispanic outreach coordinator.
Yeah, and then you had Hispanic outreach coordinator.
The director.
The director.
And then I had three program assistants, not two.
Not two. So before, you used to have one, two, three, six?
Five.
You had part-time help?
Well, that's not really... It's kind of...
Funding for part-time help?
Right. It's basically, because we do the food bank...
I get it. So it's just part-time help?
Yeah.
So the Hispanic outreach coordinator, the director...
And three program assistants. That's what I had last year.
That was five.
Right. And this year I have six.
This year you have, the outreach coordinator is gone?
No, it was just changed. The title was changed. It's the same position. It's the same person.
We're just gonna go through what's on the paper, right? So on the paper, it looks like it's gone.
Yeah.
Okay, technically, they're not being paid in the same way.
Right. It's moved to coordination, coordinator of elder programs.
Yeah, so it's important that if it's changed on the paper, we can talk about it like it's changed, even though it might be the same person.
Sure.
Because it ends up being confusing for us.
It was a little confusing for all of us, I think.
I can imagine. So we're gonna start at the top.
Okay.
Hispanic outreach coordinator has been moved. So you have the director?
Still there.
Yeah. And you have a coordinator of elder services. That's a new name, position, but it's been there before.
Correct.
And then four program assistants.
Correct.
That's six. Did I get that right?
Yes.
We're gonna work on that sheet with all the... Awesome. Councillors, any other questions on the matter of the Council on Aging?
Looks like a very straightforward budget.
Counselor Vasquez, yeah?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. It looks like a very straightforward budget to me. Don't have any questions, Martha. Thank you very much, Ms. Velez.
Thank you.
Councillors, anybody else?
Just a...
Counselor Toomey?
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President. None of these people that are listed here are here because of grants, right? This is all because of the city budget. Is that correct?
Correct.
What's the staff with granting, with grants?
How many staff do I have with grants?
So these six plus, how many?
I have two more full-time positions, and I have three more part-time positions through grants, and waiting on two more grants, hopefully. We just finished the health and well-being evaluation survey of the community to try and see the wellness, the mental wellness and well, health and well-being of Latinos in the community. And we partnered with UMass Worcester, and we just put in another proposal to continue to do that work.
Great. Any other questions?
Just a question. Have these grants run out? Some of these people are being paid through these grants, right? Someone's being paid through these grants. Is that correct?
The grant people? Or the people on this?
No, the grant people.
Yes.
They're being paid through the grants. So if the grant runs out, they're out of a job.
If I don't find another granting, yes.
Unless you can find some more granting.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Because some of these grants sometimes require the city to pick up the person when the grant runs out. And this happens quite frequently, I believe, with the police department. But I wasn't quite sure about other departments within the city. This does not happen to you, though. Is that right?
No, it's not a requirement. I mean, every grant that you get, they hope that someday it's, the position is important enough for the city to realize that it's needed to continue to provide services for the well-being and the quality of life of the elders. But, right.
Anyone else? Thank you, ma'am. Ms. Velez, thank you so much.
I think I should stay here, because I think the next one is about my, the human services.
Alright. Stick around. So that's Council on Aging.
Human assistance, yeah.
Other human services, are you too?
Yes. The thirty thousand dollar one is.
One fifty-three.
And that's page one fifty-three, right, Mark?
So what is this?
This is a contract that goes in place with the Visiting Nurses Association and Home Health VNA. And what they do is they provide health clinics at the senior center. They partner with me for the health fairs that we have and provide nurses. They also have nurses that provide podiatry for elders, cut toenails at a discounted rate for Lawrence residents. And they also run four exercise classes in the morning for seniors, which, right now, I can tell you, Monday through Thursday, our exercise program is about ninety strong.
So, the five thousand...
No, the thirty thousand.
Thirty thousand is for that?
Yes.
The visiting nurse program?
Yes.
And something else?
It, well, it's through Home Health VNA. They provide, they provide technical assistance for any fair that we run. They give us nurses to do blood pressures, diabetes screening, so on and so forth. They also, they're part of Diabetes Today Coalition. They go to meetings of wellness programs that we run at the senior center. And they have nurse that comes in once a month and cuts toenails for elders at a discounted rate.
So, this is our, is there a match that, do we give thirty and then somebody else gives more, or is it discovers all of it?
It's thirty thousand, and that's what I negotiate with them.
Do you know how many people get served through this program?
No, I can get you that, though.
That'd be great.
Definitely can, yes. But I can tell you that the exercise program, in which it's part of the ninety people every day go to exercise, Monday through Thursday.
Who runs the exercise program for you?
The Home Health VNA. In the morning. They provide the instructors. The senior center this year served, or did, like sixty thousand units of service. We continue to grow. As the baby boomers get older, the needs are there. We see a great need in elderly housing. There's a long list, waiting list, for elders. We get a lot of people asking us to fill out applications for many, many different things. We also see a great need for food because of the economic need that there is in the community. And like I said, we provide fifteen hundred bags of food with the Boston Food Bank on a monthly basis to elders. And we also, at the Fiesta de Salud that we just had in May, we also gave out five hundred bags of produce to the community, not just to elders.
Yeah. I witnessed it. It was pretty good. A pretty nice event. Alright. Any other questions on this thirty thousand? Mr. Anello, who's the other five thousand belong to?
Five thousand is a, goes to the Trauma Intervention Program of Merrimack Valley, Inc. And it's a user fee for something to do with the Trauma Intervention Program. They bill us ten thousand. We only budget five thousand, or that's how we've done it the last few years. So that's their funding towards the Trauma Intervention Program of Merrimack Valley.
Alright. Councillors, any other questions on this matter? Human assistance programs? Thank you very much.
Thank you. Have a nice night.
Maybe we do the public library next? One sixty-three? Director Nemo's here with us this evening. How you doing?
I'm doing well. How are you?
Again, I just wanna point out, we do have that, you look at personnel services, it looks like it's an increase, but it's that. Just in case, money. But I think that, does anybody have any questions about personnel services or purchase of services? How are we doing with books and subscriptions?
Well, there you're gonna see the biggest jump, because we're continuing along as we were going last year. For the past several years, we had been paying our required state books and subscription monies out of our state money itself. And so, we arrived at a situation where we had no more reserves. And now we're required to pay more for books and subscriptions than the state even gives us for money. So we're building gradually back, starting last year, for the city to cover books and subscriptions, which it is actually meant to do. The state has allowed us the freedom for a few years to use their money to cover their requirement. But, you know, that's not something that can go on forever, because we're reaching a point of diminishing returns. Our books and subscriptions are, that, the money that we're getting from state aid covers everything we do outside of paying personnel and the maintenance of the building itself. So it's, that money's really important to us, because we're working, starting this year too, we're working more and more closely with the schools, putting in more interactive programs and software that people can use at home for learning and so on, and it's things that can only be got through our webpage. So we need to have as much freedom around that money as we possibly can. We also have other non-literary requirements. For example, we had to get all the windows washed in the building this year, because it was looking terrible and so on. These are expensive, and none of that, none of which we get from our municipal monies. All we ask from the state, the city, is to provide approximately half of the books and subscriptions and personnel and the maintenance of the building itself, meaning basic maintenance. Things like getting things cleaned and so on, we have to pay for out of our state aid monies.
Through you, Mr. Vice Chairman. Thank you for being here tonight, Director Nemo.
Thank you, Councilor.
I see on energy costs, we have been reducing. Do you think that that will continue, or?
Well, I don't know that it'll continue going down and down, but we're basing this estimate on what we used this year. We did have, like Ms. Velez was saying, some of the, the system was changed in how our heating and cooling works in the building. And so we, the costs we're paying for energy has gone down somewhat.
Wonderful.
So this is reflecting what we gauged that we would pay by the end of this fiscal year and projecting forward. And as far as fuel goes, we're keeping it the same.
And now, I had a question in regards to personnel. There's an item that says, that reads "person in charge" for four thousand two hundred and twenty dollars. I don't really know what that position means.
It's not a position. That's just the way it's typed out. What, at times when the library is open and there is no administrative person in the building, administrative people being myself and my assistant director, Mrs. Santos, a small stipend is paid to the person who then takes charge of the building, is in charge of making sure it's closed properly, that everyone's out of the building. Any issues that might arise, they're in charge of taking care of them insofar as you can at the moment, and otherwise, reporting them to us. And so that would be, there would be a person in charge on Saturdays every week, Monday and Wednesday at the branch, and then three evenings a week, between five and nine.
Okay. Alright. Thank you for that clarification.
Just as a, kind of a, what we asked the same of the of the senior center. Can you tell us what's going on with your staff, because it does look like there's some change there? So can you just help us figure out how many you actually have on staff at the end of the day?
Altogether, we have eighteen persons, two part-time. We actually...
So is that, so that's eighteen total, and of the eighteen...
Eighteen, two total, of whom two are part-time. So sixteen full-time employees.
And two part-time.
Right. And that is the same as last year. What has happened is, you'll see little changes in the pay rate, because we had kind of a chain reaction when, in the July of last year, our children's room coordinator resigned. And she was replaced by the woman who was then the circulation coordinator. And that position was replaced by a woman from the outside, but who had, who had previously worked for us and had been laid off. And we just had a series of changes in who was filling what job, with the result that a few of the jobs that pay is slightly different because of either
Time in service.
Step raises, or because a person had more or less educational qualification to, you know, so you get different amounts of stipends for that. But we have the same number of jobs as we did.
And so it's eighteen and eighteen?
Yeah, from here to here.
Could you get on that list for me, because I show nineteen and nineteen?
I'm sorry?
I show nineteen and nineteen. If we go down under the, for the list here for budgeted F by thirteen, starting off with the director?
Okay. I'm sorry.
We count nineteen.
Yeah.
So can you walk us through it, so we can see that eighteen of them?
Okay, one library director.
Right.
Six library assistants.
Right.
One administrative assistant.
Right.
One adult reference library assistant.
Mm-hmm.
One assistant director.
Mm-hmm.
One cataloguer. One children's librarian, one circulation coordinator. One custodian. Two part-time library assistants. One head of technical services. And then you go down to one head custodian.
What's that person in charge? Does that mean anything?
That's what I was just saying to Counselor Vasquez. It's not a person. It's a stipend paid to people who take that position during regular hours.
It's a stipend for what?
It is, as I was explaining to the other councillor, when there was no one administrative in the building, we pay a small stipend to a person on the staff who will serve as person in charge. So that neither Anna, the assistant director, or myself work on Saturdays. So on Saturdays, the staff person who is in charge of the building is given an extra twenty dollars.
Okay.
And there's ten dollars for an evening. If they work an evening and neither of us are in the building, they get a ten dollar stipend.
There's two items here. One says provision for salary in positions of husbands, thirty-three thousand dollars. And right below it, it says provision for uncompensated absence, a negative thirty thousand.
Well, that is money that we have people, I have two people who I believe are going to retire this year.
Is that why that severance pay is listed down below?
That's the severance pay that I requested, but the city is asking that thirty thousand of that get worked off by the department itself.
So what item on here references the possibility of union contracts?
The thirty-three?
Yes.
Thirty-three thousand?
Yes.
And the next one is what?
And this thirty, the negative thirty thousand is...
That's the provision for uncompensated absences. We've asked many of the large departments to absorb a small number, or in her case, a smaller number, but the police and fire and DPW have a more substantial number because of the fact that they know there's going to be retirement during the year, or someone might go out on comp. They're not gonna spend one hundred percent of the salary for one hundred percent of the employees.
Okay.
Thank you.
I have a question.
Yeah.
So we have a director and an assistant director, and neither of you guys are there on the weekends when it's open?
It's only open on Saturdays. No, Anna is sometimes there. She takes a rotation.
Because it's forty-two hundred dollars for a person in charge when you guys are around. I would think that that's an emergency type situation, because you got two people in charge that...
Well, no, if she's there, then, if she's there, she doesn't get that money.
I know that. I'm just trying to figure out if neither of you are there on every Saturday, or it's seldom that one of you two are there on the Saturday. It seems like you could save money by not, by making it definite that one of you two have to be there on Saturday.
Well, this is, it's a union-required thing. We also pay it out for the branch library during the week.
It's union if we, it's union if no one's there.
Right.
So what I'm saying is, if someone, if you had as a policy that either you or the assistant director were there at all times barring an emergency, I want to be clear about that. I want to say like, even if you have a, but if one of you two have to be in the building while it's open at all times, then we wouldn't, this would never be triggered.
That is true, yes.
And the overtime, how do you see that get used?
The bulk of the, almost entirely, the overtime is used for building checks, which is on Sundays, on holidays, and Saturdays during the summer. Our custodians are, again, union-mandated to come into the building and check that everything's working properly and do some basic level cleaning. And in any shift they do, three hours is the least amount of time they can...
What triggers that, the building check, or do you have normal building checks?
It's part of the union contract. There's one every week.
I know.
And there's, there's one to two every week.
Okay. I know, you may have misunderstood me. I know that we have to pay it as part of the union contract. That's separate to me.
Right.
Do you mandate that there's a building check, or does a building check have to happen just on occasion?
It's a union-mandated thing.
It's the...
That it gets done.
That it gets done?
Yes. Part of our contract says, on days that the library is closed, there will be a check by one of the custodians of the building facilities.
Not something that we think should happen? It's just something that's...
It's not something that I decide to have people do, in other words. It's just part of their contract.
Can I get that language?
Pardon?
Can I get a copy of that language?
Sure, yeah.
That'd be awesome. You can see how that might be odd, right?
It has benefited us, but it's part of the union contract. Well, I mean, it is, in a way, it is something that's very practical. I mean, I sometimes think that paying three hours for something that takes half an hour, but those are, again, that's how the union, the union is set up. But having someone come in to check with, you know, that all systems are working, that the heat's either working or not working, and that sort of thing.
That sounds like a good idea. That sounds like...
Yeah, and we just do that.
But it's like something that, I think that's something that we would mandate versus something that's mandated to us. See how the difference that works?
Well, I mean, you're saying we as council, I...
No, and we as a city, we mandated versus it being mandated to us by the union. See how that matters, the difference?
Yes, but it is, in fact, a union thing. But I'll send you the, I'll send you that part of the union contract.
Thank you very much.
I'll send it to all the board.
Wow.
And also...
And does that rotate across the banners?
Well, it's two people. It's two people, so yeah, they rotate. And then the other overtime money goes to primarily shoveling, cleaning out the snow and so on. Because we take care of, if the city is taking care of the sidewalks in front of the buildings, we take care of our own parking lots and the driveways within and so on. So our men are always out there shoveling when there's a snow emergency.
Councillors, any other questions? Through you, Mr. Chairman. Counselor Vasquez, thank you.
Director Nemo, the travel and car stipend, could you explain that to me, please?
Again, we have, that is another union-mandated fee to the custodians of the building, because they use, they use their vehicles very frequently. They're not just in place. Besides just going back and forth between the two facilities, they do a lot more than just clean up the building. They're out at Jackson Lumber buying things and taking care of, more than just custodial, but, you know, a lot of overall tasks that involve the use of their vehicles. So each of them gets, let's, half of that as a, as a travel stipend for their gas and for the wear and tear on the vehicle.
I believe they get X amount per paid period, seventy-five dollars per paid period.
Yeah, I think they get paid at one lump at the beginning of the year, but it's done that way.
So this is based on the union contract?
Again, yes. That, as well as the uniform allowance and so on, that sort of thing are all union contracts.
Because I personally think that for the amount of traveling happening between both branches, I think that that's a lot of money.
Well, it isn't just between the two branches. That's what I'm saying, that they're, they travel around a fair bit, collecting. I'm saying they don't just sweep up the buildings. You know, they do a lot of heavy...
Here's a follow-up, here's a follow-up clarification question. This is automatically paid to them? They don't have to like submit mileage sheets?
Right.
Right. Could I just clarify just one thing, and that is the, it is a, in lieu of, I believe we pay the IRS-approved mileage rate, which is roughly fifty-five cents a mile. Instead of submitting travel reimbursements, somebody negotiated in their union contract many years ago, just, we'll just take a stipend instead. And maybe it was more cost-effective, I don't know, depending on how much traveling they do. But I know it was intended to travel between the two branches, but, you know, also to, maybe they have to go to the store and get certain supplies, snow melt when it snows. and get certain supplies, snow melt when it snows. I don't know how many trips they take. Maybe they have to go to an area library morning to pick up books.
They have to do a number of things.
Yeah, I know. Again, we, I think we understand what the travel means. We understand that there might be some travel. It's not just between the branches. I think that the concern is that it's this large of an amount and that there's no actual interaction with, they just get it automatically. Even the months or years that they do very little travel compared to the ones that they may do a lot of travel. Because I can't think that they're in the car traveling the same amount of time every year for the same amount of... So either some years the city's getting beat, or some years they're getting beat.
Possibly so. But this, this particular stipend was put back in the contract perhaps four years ago. The previous, I believe it was the previous budget and finance director removed travel and car stipend, but not just from our staff, but from various other staffs. There was a big union grievance about it, and it was restored. So I don't know.
Okay.
It was restored at that rate.
You start before I suppose.
Thank you.
Thank you, Director Nemo. Thank you, Mr. Shum.
Any other questions? Battle of the library?
No.
Any questions for us?
Um, no, no.
Thank you, Director Nemo. Appreciate it.
All right, and I'll send you that part from the contract.
Counselors, next up, we have the staff from the Greater Lawrence, Greater Lawrence Technical School.
Evening, Counsel.
How you doing, Mr. Superintendent?
Very good. Yourself?
Doing okay. What page were you on?
You should have a bringing binder of our fiscal year 2014 budget proposal.
One twelve, right?
Page one thirteen.
Okay.
One twelve. All right.
Yes, one thirteen.
All right. That's the roll-up, but you should have your binder provided to us a while back.
If you look on page, on section four, page four, you see the proposed revenues and the estimated foundation revenues and the minimum contributions for each member community.
Through you, Mr. Shum.
Good.
Counselor Vasquez. Thank you, Mr. Shum. Mr. Superintendent, can you please describe how the revenue comes about for each community?
Each community is the revenue, minimum contribution, well, we start off with state aid, chapter seventy, which is twenty million, two hundred ninety-five thousand, three hundred and six. And then each member, minimum contribution, which is set by the state, what the contribution needs to be in order to meet net school spending, and using the state formula. And this year for Andover, it was two hundred, and it's based on student population as well. For Andover, we had two hundred ninety-three thousand, five hundred and seventy-one. Lawrence, seven hundred sixty-eight thousand, nine hundred and thirty-four dollars is the minimum contribution for foundation budget. And that's based on three less students than we had last year. Total number of students we have from the city of Lawrence was one thousand six students, which is about seventy-three point one percent of our student population. And then for non-foundation, which includes the S, the grant for the addition that was put on about ten years ago and the contribution or assessment for each, for the city of Lawrence, which also includes regional school transportation for the city of Lawrence was one million, twenty-six thousand, seven hundred and seventy-nine, which is based on the number of students, which is seventy-three point one percent of our total non-foundation budget.
What page has the counts of the number of students?
If you look on section five, you'll see the foundation function descriptions with the different accounts.
Yeah.
Starting with administration, with the proposed budget for 2014. In administration, you'll see one million, five hundred and fifty-five dollars. And then each function from there goes down. For a total foundation budget of, if you were to go through each one, would be twenty-four million, nine hundred and fifteen thousand, seven hundred and seventy-four.
This is up almost two hundred thousand dollars?
From, yes, from last year.
Why is there so much less being spent on plant maintenance?
On which item was that?
Operation and maintenance of plant. Four thousand, nine, four thousand?
Up two million, four hundred and fifty thousand, eight hundred and ten.
Yeah, it just seemed like there's a lot less being spent this year. Is it just because, is there any...
Well, for one, for one thing, our, one hundred eighty thousand, one hundred eighty thousand, five hundred and twenty-three reflects, hold on a second.
The details are page seven dash three.
Yep.
Section seven?
Tab seven, page three.
Right.
It looks like the supply line is down.
The, for the most part, it's made up of utility savings, electric and gas. We did a, we redid all our lighting about three years ago with a grant of one, it was approximately cost of about three hundred and twenty thousand. We did a...
Just don't say LED.
No, we didn't put LED.
We'll be envious.
We looked at LED, but it would have taken eight years to pay back. What we did was changed our fluorescent lighting, which was a two-year, two and a half-year payback, which we ended up with significant savings in our electric bill, as well as renegotiated our electric contract for savings in our electric bill. And we negotiated our gas contract, natural gas contract, which we had a significant savings from that as well.
Awesome.
In terms of our utility. As well as introduce some conservation actions as well.
And you're, it looks like you're down on the discipline line too. It looks like you're down almost a hundred grand. Is that just personnel?
Let's see.
Looks like it's personnel.
Other salaries. Oh, okay. But that wouldn't have been under, wouldn't have been under this kind of... Under other maintenance of...
Just less personnel?
Were you looking under personnel, discipline?
The discipline line.
Oh, yes. We moved one of our salaries from discipline. We had a, one personnel less in discipline that we are not filling that position.
Sorry, I didn't mean to jump around on you, but I just saw that on the lines. So you are, we're looking at the roll-up on page five of tab five. Actually, have you any questions on that page?
I did notice that your insurance of active employees, does that increase that because you've increased your active employees? That make sense?
It's up two hundred and twenty-seven thousand.
Yeah.
Nine fifty-two hundred.
That would have been an increase in our medical insurance.
Increasing the cost of medical insurance?
Yes.
When we went to GIC, did you guys go to GIC too?
We have not gone GIC. Teachers has a three-year contract. We're in, next year we're the third year of the three-year contract, which included the Blue Cross Blue Shield medical benefits that we're getting when we negotiated that contract. So next contract, we would have an opportunity to renegotiate the medical and look at that, and we intend on looking at that.
I mean, I have that healthcare of GIC. It's good, it's fair plan, and it saved the city a ton of money. A ton of money. We're still realizing savings on that.
On...
Yeah, on GIC.
Now, your employees are unionized, right?
Excuse me?
Employees are unionized, correct?
Yes.
With the insurance, does that, do they have any say in the insurance, or is this strictly through the, to the school itself?
Yes, they have say in the, in the type of insurance. They negotiate the plan. They negotiate what percentage that they pay to, as part of their contribution to the plan as well.
What's the school of choice?
School of choice?
School of choice. Are those students who choose to go to outside of district? As long, they can go to a school other than Greater Lawrence, other vocational schools. Lawrence, I believe there's about a hundred students from the city of Lawrence that go to Whittier. And that's where you're seeing, where we pay five thousand dollars to the Whittier for each student that goes to Whittier as our part of the contribution.
Thank you, Counsel.
Three, Mr. Shum.
Counselor Vasquez.
Just out of curiosity, do we have any students that come from outside of the Greater Lawrence area?
Two Greater Lawrence? I believe we have two students that are school choice students that come to Greater Lawrence.
From what communities? It's okay if you don't know, I just was...
I think one was from Lowell, and I don't remember the other one.
And that's program choice, right? Because they may have a program that they don't have?
Possibly, or, or they prefer, for one reason or another, to come to Greater Lawrence as opposed, and that case would be Greater Lowell. Or it could be because of a particular program that we may have.
Thank you. So the numbers are now, that's page six of tab six? The counts of students?
Excuse me?
Is that the, that page six?
Page six, yes. So you see the numbers from Lawrence. There's one thousand six students, and there are thirty-seven students at other vocational technical schools.
You know what? If you don't have it for today, that's fine. It'd be nice to see how it was trending, to see how it was year over year.
Yes.
There's more students.
It's been going, it's been going down over each year. Most of those students are going to Whittier and Haverhill. Most of the school choice students go to Whittier, and that's, that's been going down each year.
I am actually talking about all the community ones, so if you look at...
All the numbers from each community, the trends from each community?
Yeah, the whole school enrollment. If we could see, you know, at Greater Lawrence, from Andover Lawrence, Methuen, North Andover, for the last three years, that'd be, be nice.
Sure.
And you said choice students at other schools for the last three years. And then whatever that last category is for the last three years, because it just helps us look, you know, are more students from Lawrence going there? Are less students from Lawrence going there? Are more students from the other communities going there? It'd be nice to see like a snapshot. Is that something you can get us?
We can, I can get that to you, sure.
That'd be awesome.
Yes, we can, we can email that over to you.
That'd be awesome.
Sure.
Just an observation. I was looking at the number of students from Methuen. It looks like there's three hundred and forty-six of them versus Lawrence, one thousand forty-three. And the amount that Methuen is paying, what they're, it's twenty-five, two million, five hundred and eighty-four thousand, two hundred and seventy-seven dollars. I know, I know it works out through the formula, because I was up to your, one of your, your functions up at the school, and they were trying to explain how the, how the formula works.
State formula works, yes.
And I was totally confused, so I went out and got a cup of coffee. So it just, it just blows my mind to find out that Methuen has three hundred and forty-six students, Lawrence has one thousand forty-three. And Lawrence's portion is seven hundred and, seven hundred and sixty-eight thousand, and Methuen's portion is two and a half million. Just fine, very strange. Just an observation.
And the formula really is whatever the percentage the city of Lawrence pays for its students to go to Lawrence schools is the same percentage that they pay for their students to go to the Greater Lawrence Tech. And the same thing works for Methuen and Andover, North Andover.
They pay more towards their base, the state pays more towards our base. That's the difference.
Right. Well, pays the same amount, but our, our per pupil cost is higher for Greater Lawrence Tech than it is Lawrence, so... But the percentage that you pay is the same to either, to Greater Lawrence or to Lawrence, but it costs more money to educate a student at Greater Lawrence than it does, let's say, at Lawrence High School because of the shock programs and the education is a little more money, a little more expensive.
Thank you.
Anything else in the book you want to show us?
Nope, not at this time. I would, if I could, just remind you, we talked a little bit about, we have an MSBA project that, that will be, I think we've sent you some information about that, that MSBA will be voting on in their July meeting, which is some repair work.
Building development, MS, MS...
Massachusetts School Building Authority.
Yeah.
The project is just around, it's about a six million dollar project. We're at about just under eighty percent reimbursement rate for Greater Lawrence Technical School. They will vote on certain aspects of the project that they will fund or not fund. And then we would come before the city council, but I will, once we know the exact figures, get back to, back to you on some exact figures and what percentage that would mean to the city.
I would encourage you, I mean, we can't, we don't want to put it on the agenda or anything, but it would encourage you to invite us out there to the school and have, and go through what that is you're doing so that we all are aware of it ahead of time.
Absolutely.
It'd be a nice thing to do. That way folks won't have to hear it the first time when it comes before the council.
Right.
It can be a real circus when it does that.
Sure.
Because folks will feel like they don't have enough information. So we'd love to come down, maybe have some lunch with the students and listen to that project.
We could do that. Would you prefer us to come here, though? Would it be easier to do a presentation before the full, full city council here? Then, I mean, we're okay with bringing you out to the school. I don't know if that's more, or even in an evening meeting, if that's whatever works easier for the... meeting, if that's whatever works easier for the city.
I think evening works for most councils, depending on which evenings.
Okay.
Because we have so much stuff going on.
Sure.
But I think we can banter some around. Just throw an email around, that people can set a couple of dates, nights or day, or mornings.
Okay.
And we'll figure something out.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm not sure.
Very good.
Any other questions, counselors?
No.
Thank you, Superintendent.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up, Lawrence Public Schools. And as you know, we did receive a second document. You should, everyone should have the first book that we got, but we also got a second document that came out. I want to read a couple of things into, into the record, if that's okay with you. The first thing that we have is... The letter that the superintendent provided to us, in accordance with the city ordinance, I'm submitting copy of the proposed FY 2014 receivers budget. The Lawrence Schools' proposed budget figure is a hundred and fifty, I don't know if that's still the same, but, um... Yep. It's a hundred and fifty-nine, eighty-eight, a hundred and fifty-nine million, eight hundred thousand, eighty-eight dol, dollars, which, I said it wrong, a hundred and fifty-nine thousand, eight hundred and eighty-eight thousand dollars, which represents the spend, the spending required by the city to meet its net school spending budget as required under the Chapter Seventy formula. Proposed budget has aligned our resources to ensure that the school receives, the schools receive the resources they need. It includes expanded learning time, data-driven instruction, talent recruitment and retention, special education and student support services, parent and community engagement, and common core curriculum. And this was sent to the, by, to us by the superintendent. And we received a new, updated one that talks about a revised copy of the Lawrence Public School proposed budget, which is the same amount as before. However, we wanted to clarify and adjust portions of the document based on questions they received at the week, at that last week's school committee meeting. You'll find the resulting changes with these revisions on page seven and forty-eight of the attached document. I directed my staff to revise the budget document to ensure consistent classification of funds between salaries, operating costs, and fixed costs, both across departments and fiscal years. These labels were not consistent in the original submission. Also asked the staff to provide additional detail for central department budgets by categorizing central office costs in three ways: central office, school-based services, budgeted centrally, and employee benefits. This also reflects our recent reduction of central staff by twenty-five percent. So, sounds like you guys had a meeting with the school committee, and they made, they made some recommendations, and you guys fixed them.
There were some questions that came up that were not clear in the way the budget represented, so we made those adjustments to make sure that was clear.
You know what? I gotta apologize. Just as a, the chair of the Greater Lawrence Vocational School Committee was here, Mr.?
Lavoy?
Mr. Lavoy, no, the chairman of the school committee.
Oh, the, yes.
Leo Lamontaine. And I totally forgot to mention him. So, let the ref reflect that the chair of the, of the Greater Lawrence Vocational School is here. Haste makes waste. And so, with us this evening, we have members of the Lawrence School Committee as well, Mr. Blackford and Mrs. Cerro, right?
Superintendent Riley is actually en route. He's returning from a meeting out of town, so he should be here shortly also.
We'll go slow, so it won't be a waste of his time. Do you want to do some highlights for us, and then go from there?
So, the budget that you have before you is our budget that was submitted to the mayor. It is built on the governor's budget, has not been adjusted yet to the figures that came out of the Senate, and we will wait the final figures that will be coming forth once the House weighs, I mean, Senate weighs and means come to a consensus budget. So, we understand that the mayor put in a figure that is different than what we have in the budget book that you have before you, and we will make our adjustments accordingly when the final figures do come out.
All right, so, so the budget that's in our book, which is what page, Mr. Tum, the Lawrence Public Schools?
The one in our book.
Hi.
Yeah, but it doesn't turn out to be the same numbers.
Yeah, this, the one in our book is one five six two two nine.
Right.
And the one in their book is one five nine.
One five nine.
Eight seven nine.
And we know that there was also a capital allocation of one point six million for capital projects that would offset those two towards net school spending.
Let me just recap for you. It's a hundred and fifty-six million, two hundred and twenty-nine thousand, five eighteen.
Right.
Which is in the budget document before you. Also, that went down with the budget document was a transfer from the capital reserve fund to capital projects for net school spending eligible projects for one point six million. So, the amount in the mayor's budget proposal, if you will, is a hundred and fifty-seven million, eight twenty-nine, five eighteen. The, the, the school department stayed with the governor's proposal, governor's budget, and they've submitted a budget of a hundred and fifty-nine million, eight hundred and seventy-nine thousand, eight oh seven, for a difference of approximately two million, which is the, generally the difference in state aid between the Senate version and the governor's proposal.
So, we, we submitted that because that is the budget we publicly put out and had our public hearing on, and understand that whatever the final budget is, we will have to reflect that once that is finalized.
So, are you saying, Mr. Rinaldo, that we're covered by net school spending regardless of what the end number's going to be because of the capital campaign, capital money?
Neither of us is covered by net school spending until the, until the governor, until the, the budget is passed, but there's a, the first, the governor's proposal was to fund at the, at the foundation level, all of the communities in Massachusetts. Then the House took that and cut it a little bit, the Senate cut it a little bit more. So, we went with the last version in our case, but, you know, the school department will, what they're saying is, when the budget is finally passed by the House and Senate, that's when they'll go back to their budget. And who, and, you know, I'm sure they're hopeful that there is no adjustment.
So, I guess, because that's okay, they're, you guys can be hopeful for it. I'm just trying to figure out if we're covered for net school spending. So, if we go halfway between the governor's budget and the, the House budget, let's say that's where you land, are we, are we going to be short on net school spending? And by how much?
Can you say that again?
Could be up to about a million.
So, if we don't do, that, because it's not obvious that it will be the governor's budget, let's just say that.
Right.
Nor is it obvious that it'll be the Senate's budget. But if it's someplace in between, let's say if we're just making an assumption, if it's somewhere in between, are we going to be short on net school spending? And if so, how much?
We hope not to, because no matter, determine, depending on which budget does actually get passed, the Chapter Seventy will increase or decrease accordingly with our appropriation. The school department, i- if it doesn't, if, you know, they might have to go back and cut their budget if, you know, if they're not successful in getting the...
I understand that.
Net school spending. But, but in other words...
My question is more fundamental.
It is, it is a function of the Chapter Seventy aid.
My question is a real fundamental one, though. If we don't get the governors, or we, we get closer to the Senate's version, at the end, they're going to have to fix it, but will the city of Lawrence be covered for the net school spending?
Will be covered, yes.
A hundred percent?
We have, we have, we funded the net school spending at a hundred percent.
At the...
And of the Senate, of the Senate version. If we go back to the House version, it'd be a different story.
Then you may have to come to the appropriation.
Again, we could, and I don't mean to belon the point, but it's kind of important. It's not certain that it's going to be the governor's budget, so, and it's not certain it's going to be the Senate budget.
Right.
It's helpful to maybe say it's going to be someplace in between. So, if it's someplace in between, are we going to be set? Are we going to be a hundred percent on net school spending? Or do we have to adjust our budget to meet net school spending?
I guess what I'm saying is, there is no way to know what the number is, so if, if it, if it's not the number we have in the budget, yes, we'll be back to the council, either, either making a cut or asking for an additional appropriation from the city's perspective, meet our net school spending obligation. The school department may have something else to do, but, you know...
Depending on what we do.
Well, it's, exactly. You know, if we didn't fund net school spending to its minimum required contribution, which is what we've, we've budgeted for here, if we, if we budgeted less than the minimum contribution, they'd really have to make some cuts. So, I don't think there's any intention to fund anything other than the required contribution that the state, state is asking us to do to meet the foundation budget, and that's what we're budgeting.
But for clarity, the minimum contribution is probably about five percent less than they really need, or something close to that, right?
Yeah, the minimum contribution is, it's roughly three point seven million.
Yeah. But we can meet, we can meet ninety-seven percent of net school spending and be, and be okay by the law.
That's correct. You can be within five percent.
So, ninety-five percent, yeah. So, that's not good for them.
We, we are saying that you're dancing very close to that line currently. So, just so, we're, we're putting that out there.
Yeah, so, cl, just for clarity, the net school, we have to spend X amount of money out of the city budget towards the schools.
Right.
And that num, and the number is set because there's a number of students. We've got to teach every one of them, and we have a percentage of that that we have to pay for. That number is constant. Law says our percentage of net school spending is, we have to, they tell us here's a hundred percent of what would be net school spending, and we don't have to meet, we don't have to meet ninety-five percent. So, we could short the students five percent.
Well, I'm doing, I'm looking at the net school spending calculations on page five of the budget.
Of their, of the school budget.
Of the school budget. And down at the bottom, it says required net school spend is one, a hundred and sixty-seven million, nine fifty-five, et cetera. Chapter Seventy, according to this, is a hundred and sixty. The difference is seven point three million. That's four point three five percent. Is this the requirement that, that Lawrence is required to pay? Is that, is that what you're talking about?
That was the, the amount based on the governor's budget, that six point seven, seven point three million would be coming from local revenue sources.
Will be coming from local revenue sources.
Right. But that is adjusted based on the Senate figures that we currently have before you.
If, if this remains the same, what does, what does the city budget in the way for net school, for our requirements to pay for? How much do we budget? It says you owe them seven point three million. How much do we budget? How much does the city budget for this?
The seven point three million.
Seven point three million.
Yes.
Where would we find that in the budget?
That's in a hundred and fifty-six million, two hundred and twenty-nine thousand, five eighteen.
That's all part of it?
It's one, you know, we, these, we're, the school committee, we vote on one number, the school committee decides what to do with it, or the superintendent in this case. So, that's the, the one number that we're appropriating for the school to meet net school spending. That's what we're, that, that's how the, the number's calculated. This spreadsheet that Mary Lou is pointing to is the calculation of what they use. Now, they use the, the governor's recommended, but it would be numbers slightly different, the, the, right, of the, the state aid would be reduced, the foundation budget would be reduced, and then the local contribution.
Okay, but required, required net school spending is going to stay the same, a hundred and sixty-seven million, nine fifty-five, right?
That gets adjusted depending on what the final budget is from the, between the House and Senate. So, we use the governor's budget. That was the figure from the governor's budget. That has changed slightly since we went to the Senate budget, and it's now at one, that's a chat, no, that's not, no.
That's just the, just the...
It's down, I believe, around one sixty-three, if I'm not mistaken. So, they all adjust as the revenues change, they adjust the actual calculations for net school spending.
We don't really approve anything here tonight. We don't approve anything here tonight. We're just going over the numbers.
You're listening to our, our justification for the figures we're putting before you.
I think what we're asking, if I could speak for the school department, is, we would like the, the city council not to cut the school appropriation, because we are at, at the minimum. We don't want to go below the minimum, as, as I think Assistant Superintendent just indicated. We're, we're very close to getting ourselves into a little problem.
That five percent is cumulative, so if you don't meet it, the shirt carries, so.
Well, the, the reality is that we don't, if you, I don't even see the breakout for the school department. We used to have a breakout by, by expense. I don't think that's in the book right now.
Not in that book.
It's, it's in...
It's in our book, that we provided.
Superintendent provided.
Yeah, but before, we used to see them broken out by transportation and...
The only thing we have is a, a, there was transportation.
Adult, adult learning.
Adult, adult education.
So, that used to be broken out in this book.
I thi, I think you're right. We did have a line on him, but it really is the school department's appropriation. We don't, it's not really in our budget.
So, just as a note, like the ones we did, we should put it back in. It clarifies it easier for us.
Okay, yeah.
Thank you.
Really, really, the only thing we can...
Let's trust, I'm sorry, just one last, because we did take money out of the Adult Learning Center budget once, and we wouldn't have done it if we didn't see it. So, it's kind of important. Sorry about that, Counselor Tum, it's your floor.
You know, I'll...
Those figures are on net school spending page, if you need to look at them. On page five.
Now, transportation is listed on page five.
Mm-hmm.
What, six million, one hundred and eight thousand dollars?
Correct.
If we were going to cut it off, that's the only area we could cut in. Is that correct? If we were going to cut anything, this was the only area that we could cut in.
The two areas that are city expenditures that don't count towards net school spending are the adult debt and the transportation. You do have obligation for transportation under the law for...
For the...
Populations of students, yes.
Yes, I know. We, I... Were required in the law to, to provide the, um, transportation for handicapped children, right?
Special needs children, from educational plans call for that, yes.
Is that all part of that cost of six million?
The vast majority of that money is special education transportation.
Special education transportation?
Yes. Would you like to do your intro? We've been kind of holding. I appreciate that.
Commissioner Riley, thank you for joining us.
Thanks for having me.
Good evening.
Your indulgence, I'd like to speak briefly, just for about a minute or so.
Sure. Counselor Tum, unless you're done with your...
Yeah, I'm off for the moment.
So, we had a great day yesterday. We graduated over six hundred and fifty children, one of the largest classes in recent memory. It's a lot of hard work by a lot of people in the school department, so we're very, very pleased with that work. It's been many things that we've been taking on, from fixing buildings to adding enrichment. But the budget tonight represents a kind of a statement of our values and what we're trying to get done. We're increasing learning time in the one to eight levels, because we think our kids need more time to close the achievement gap. We're going to use data to kind of figure out where our kids are and to move the needle and get them where they need to be. We think we need to recruit really well and keep the people inside the district that are doing a great job every day. We need to add resources for our second language learners and our special needs students, and we've got to work with our parent and community to make sure that they feel engaged and feel welcomed into the school system. Finally, we've got to migrate towards what's known as the Common Core, which is a new curriculum that's taking place across the country. And the budget you see before you is kind of a reflection of that. Obviously, there's a lot going on in the budget process. Our budget was based on the governor's numbers. Things won't be finalized on Biggin Hill until the next few weeks, but it gives you a direction of where we're trying to go. And I just wanted to take the opportunity to thank you for letting us come speak to you today. I've brought, or they brought me, Dr. Bergeron and Christine Bofagna, to answer all the detailed questions that you may have.
We're just talking about transportation a little bit, but...
Yeah, we're just, we're just talking about transportation. Like, that's the only area that we would be able to cut into.
That, and the adult learning.
I'm going to drop that one. I was looking at the adjusted, page seven, that was given to us, when it was updated. Yeah. Now, in the total, just looking at the totals, two thousand and twelve, two thousand and thirteen, the total budget was a hundred and fifty million. For thirteen, fourteen is a hundred and fifty-nine. So, actually, it increased by nine point seven million dollars. Correct?
That's correct.
And in looking at it, a largest, it looks like the largest portion of it went into salaries.
That's correct.
And is that... And is that for, like, pay raises, contractual pay raises?
No, we actually have a hundred and seventy additional staff onboard this year as part of our redesign work for the fellows that are at the two Level Four high schools and for the new work that we're doing with the educational management companies taking on some of our schools, like Community Day Charter, Phoenix Academy, and Locking Potent.
Also, a lot of this growth here is reflected in the student enrollment numbers, which have risen dramatically over the last year or so.
You mean the.
More and more students are entering the Lawrence Public Schools.
There's a correlation between the number of students and you have to have number of staff?
Yes. That and what drives your net school spending is your foundation numbers, and our numbers are up, so that means the allocation to the city is up for education.
Some of this enrollment spike is due to our outreach to get our dropout students back into the school system, kids that have been out of school for over a year or more.
That the Phoenix Academy thing, that?
Phoenix is one of the programs, but, you know, we have other programs as well where we've been really working hard to get our kids back into the school system, which then entitles us from additional funding from the state.
And similarly, the vote mentioned how their enrollment is going down from Lawrence in their school, our enrollment is going up at our high schools. So we're averaging now about thirty, almost thirty-two fifty on the high school campus, which is well over two hundred and fifty from last year, more than the students that we had on campus last year.
Now, how many did you say graduated recently?
Over six hundred and fifty students graduated yesterday.
And do you have any idea what percentage of those are going on to higher education?
Won't get the exact figure yet.
We can get you those numbers.
Just curious, because I can remember talking to one of the principals of, I think it was the business community, the business college over there, this is going back a couple of years ago, and, you know, Lawrence doesn't get very much good play in the papers, very rarely ever see anything like that. He was saying that something like ninety-five or ninety-six percent of his graduating class that year were going on to higher education, which surprised me, because, you know, we don't see anything like that in the paper, you know, which is good news.
There is good news, I don't know if it's that high, but I think there's certainly good news in the district. We do have also a lot of students entering the military, I mean, we've got kids going to vocational programs, there's different things happening.
It'll be interesting to see how many of the graduating class are going on to secondary schools, either you know, Neco or four-year college.
We'll be getting that as they finish their data for the end of the year, and we're also projecting another fifty-five to sixty graduates in August.
Oh, good. Now, these kids that go to the Phoenix, they're just going after, what, the GEDs?
No, they're getting a full high school diploma.
A full high school diploma?
Yes.
Okay, okay.
So they're completing all the core requirements, all the graduation requirements to get an LHS diploma.
Okay, that's good. I don't have any questions.
I have a few questions, but right off the bat, I was wondering if we could do, we had this request of the Great Lawrence Tech School. The positions, your budget's broken out by building.
Mm-hmm.
Is there any way that we can get a sheet that shows us the number of the positions in the building or this year versus last year?
Sure.
Because the cumulative isn't really helpful to us, like, so we know where all the people have gone. It just helps, kind of like the budget line, see the decrease and increase. If you could do that by school, that'd be cool. Got some questions from the board, how is it? The bottom line didn't change from submissions, right?
No. It was minor tweaks between adjusting things that might have been fixed cost versus operating, some extra duty benefits, I think it was mostly the benefits, the severance blended in under salary rather than under an operating cost, and a couple of lines.
What goes into your operating costs?
Operating costs are all of the educational materials, supplies for operating buildings, textbooks, curriculum materials.
But, you know, I've heard some weird story from people, from some people saying teachers had to supply pencils and papers and things like that to their students, you know, because it seems to me with a.
I don't believe that that is covered this year. I believe that they have plenty of supplies.
It seems to me that with a budget of a hundred and fifty-nine million dollars coming in, that the, that these things would be, it would be plentiful.
I've not heard that, because we check regularly to make sure that that is not the case. I'm not saying teachers don't go out and buy specific things that they want, but they do get an allocation for materials, and the school has a good allocation for the resources for all of those types of supplies.
When you say allocation, you're talking about like paperwork, pens and pencils and books and things of that sort?
And that's at their discretion about how they wish to use it, each school gets to make those decisions for how they're going to spend the money that's allocated to their school.
Now, the books, are the books that they receive, this is coming into high school, freshman in high school, do they get, do they get a brand-new book, or do they get like a book that's been used before? How's all that work?
Majority, it's a book that we had this year, somebody took it for the year, returned it, and then they choose again next year. They don't get replaced every single year, no.
Don't get replaced every year?
Only when we adopt new text, where you can see the new book.
Yeah. It's been a long time since I've been out of school, you know? Things change.
True.
I'm all set. I didn't mean to cut into you. No, you're good, you're, you had the floor. I was trying to get my ducks in a row. So now I'm looking between the two budgets, the first budget and the, that we got, the second one, it does look a little awkward, where almost three million, three hundred and fifty thousand dollars moved from salaries, and then, and then all of a sudden there's three million, almost two something million more in fixed cost. Somebody explain that?
We had, when, we had a school committee meeting on Tuesday night, and we looked at the classification between salaries and historically between the three years of how we classified them. We went through every line and readjusted and moved things like tuition reimbursements, which we originally had allocated as salaries, because that's how they paid out.
Say that again?
Tuition reimbursement to teachers who take coursework, and we reimburse them for the tuition. We realigned that to more of an operating cost, because that's how it's budgeted, and that's how it was realigned between the three fiscal years.
So it's not, I mean, some people may say, well, it was originally seen as a, as a salary. You guys aren't hiding positions in the cost, like they're, they're not bodies that have been.
No, it's, it's things like tuition reimbursement, severance payments out, buyback, for sick time not used, things of that nature, that was reallocated between operating and fixed costs. But the bottom line did not change.
We have a budget before us on our side that has, takes into account contracts that have not been negotiated.
Mm-hmm.
I'm of the feeling that that meet, once we pass that budget, that we're going to be in hawk to that, regardless of what happens at the negotiating table. So I think it's a, it's a bad thing to do to put it in the budget, I think we're going to have to pay for it. Do you guys have an appropriation in your budget for?
We're actually in consultation with the unions currently, so we have money for our extended time, additional time that people may be working, that is in the budget.
But you don't have money for a new, for a new contract in here?
We have, we've projected what we believe it will cost us to run this additional time, which will be compensation for people. And that's part of the adjustment and part of the new salary.
Career.
Career law, making sure I'm using the right language, I knew, career ladder, where adjusted people's salaries based on their time in the district and their skill sets. So that's how we used our figures to budget our salaries.
I'm going to try to decipher that. So you have money in this budget for the current way people, you're going to pay people?
Yes.
Which is different from money in this budget to pay for the contract as it gets written?
Correct.
Is there going to be a correlation between the two? There's going to be a contract that looks like the way you're going to pay people?
That's what the consultation.
Some people are saying they might not be.
That's what our consultation is leaning towards at this moment.
Because you'd hate for people to think that there wouldn't be a contract.
There will be a contract, yes.
We believe there will be a contract. We're in consultation with the union right now. Receiver ship obviously presents a different set of rules that apply, but we intend to work with the teachers to try to get this resolved.
And we're consulting with all of our units at this point.
All the different units, yeah.
Okay.
Not just the teachers' union.
Because you wouldn't want people to think that there would be, that the whole idea of collective bargaining for the U teachers would be gone, so that, that's why I say if there's a correlation between the way you're going to be, on our side, you know, we're budgeting to deal with a collective bargaining agreement. And I was just wondering if you had that money in your budget for however you're going to pay for your folks in what ends up being some type of collective bargaining agreement?
Yes.
It's without, because those discussions are ongoing, it probably wouldn't be appropriate for me to comment.
Okay.
But what I can say is that we intend to work with all of our bargaining units to get contracts resolved.
All right.
And our budget will cover those.
And our budget will cover those. Find folks that, you know, this is, this is the foundation-level budget, this is no additional funds on top of that. We're one of the few school districts in the state that does not have that additional funding that comes in. We don't ask for that, we plan to operate within our budget.
Mm-hmm.
And that includes paying our employees.
Any other questions? I know, I know the school committee got their bite at the apple the other day, but I would like to give, if there's school members in the audience that like to have a question that didn't get answered or that I could answer. Everybody cool? The debt on the, on the schools.
Mm-hmm.
We own the debt on the schools.
Yes.
But it's, it gets paid through the chapter seventy money? That debt service?
You're getting reimbursed by MSBA as you go at this point.
The debt service for the schools is on the city side of the budget. We do get a reimbursement for some of the MSBA-funded projects of about seven point two million.
How much?
Approximately seven point two million.
Okay. So we get, none of the chapter seventy money, zero, goes to pay the debt?
The schools are, schools, the school construction is funded by the city.
Well, I'm going to add, because you have to be clear, we set aside twenty-one million dollars between nineteen eighty, nineteen eighty, ninety-seven and two thousand and six to pay for school construction. That did come out of chapter seventy dollars.
Okay. And every year we take some of that money and pay the bill?
I don't know how the city's operating with that money.
That's a question I would like to see answered. Yeah, I'm not just, now I'm.
Not exactly sure what the question is, but the debt on the, for the school construction is paid by the city.
Okay.
And, and as you have the debt schedule, counselor.
I'm looking.
It's in the, it's in the general fund side of the budget. I think that's your question.
Yeah, so, no, I know that we pay for it, it shows up on our sheet, that we have debt that we pay for. I just want to know, does any money from current chapter seventy dollars every year go to pay for the loans? That all that money comes from us, from the city side?
That's correct.
From the, from the, the local taxpayers. But what you're saying is at one time, we put aside money to pay for that.
We had special legislation to do that.
And so where does that go?
That was given to the city to put in the construction reserve at that point.
That doesn't look like you know what she's talking about.
There is no construction reserve, so whatever this, whatever they did, whatever the city did with it, it's gone.
A total twenty-one million.
Yeah, I mean, I don't doubt that it was forthcoming from the school, I don't know where it is or what they used it. Maybe they paid down some of the debt, and that's why we have less debt today. I don't know if we.
I wasn't asking.
Certainly research it.
This is, I don't know either, that's new to me too, so I, I didn't ask to try to get that information, but I'm glad we have it. I'm just trying to figure out, I was told that we did pay for some of that school debt, the school building debt from chapter seventy money, which if we don't, if we refinance that debt, how much of that money from refinancing the school construction debt can we get back?
If we refinance any debt that was reimbursed, again, we pay the entire debt, and then the, there's a few of the school projects which were done under the old MSBA program.
Yeah.
And we get a reimbursement, this is the last year for one of them.
Yeah.
FY fourteen, it'll be the last year for one of the schools, and I think there's three remaining.
Yeah.
But anyway, for FY fourteen, I believe it's seven point two eight, eight million dollars, and for some reason that seems to stick in my head, but it's approximately seven point two million dollars. So we get reimbursed for that, and, and, so the net amount that you see on the debt schedule is what we're going to be paying.
Okay.
And if we were to refinance one of those three notes, and I believe they're ninety percent reimbursed by the state, ninety percent of the savings would have to be given to the MSBA. They want to recover that.
So if we refinance it.
We refinance, we get, we'll save the ten percent, you know, if we save a hundred thousand dollars, or we save a hundred thousand, we'll get ten thousand, the MSBA will get the other ninety thousand.
There's a lot there, and some of these rates are high.
Well, I think I just, we just had our financial advisor review our debt, and there were two refunding opportunities. I don't believe either one of them were related to the schools, however.
And that's why I bring it up, because I think sometimes we forget that those things are on the ledger, because they're, some of them are reimbursed and all that stuff. But if you do the math on some of these, if we can get down, we got four, we have one that's going to zero out right now, that's four point seven percent, three and a half percent, four point two percent, you know, we're paying one point two, one on some of this other debt.
Well, we're paying, we may not, if we were to refinance, we may not pay one. The amount that we're paying today is our short-term notes, we're, we're getting at one percent or less, our deficit financing bonds, we just refinanced for seven point two million June first, and we received less than one percent of an interest rate or there abouts. But when you, with some of these, these bonds, you would not get that as favorable a rate, they'd be, they'd be funded a little differently. But there is, again, we've asked for all of our outstanding debt, some of it is not callable, some is, some is called, some are callable after a certain number of years and not before.
Yeah.
So you can't really, you know, do something, but our financial advisor has gone through the, at current market rates, and including, including the bond cost of issuance, which is the bond council and First Southwest and all the other stuff that we have to pay, Moody's and S and P to do a rating, they rate us every quarter, there's a fee for that, all of those costs, exclusive of cost, we, there are two refunding opportunities, which should, should save us anywhere from, you know, eighty to a hundred and twenty-five thousand, or ninety to a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars.
And how about the concept of maybe extending the debt on some of this? Is that something that we're allowed to do?
That's something that, when our capital improvement plan is complete, that I'm going to ask for, for some additional analysis, okay, maybe there isn't a cost savings, but to get.
You push it up ten.
Biggest bang for our buck, I'd like to, we may, maybe, we may want to refinance, even if it doesn't save us any money, if it helps our debt schedule.
Yeah. And, and just for issue of like, when I think about this debt, to have some liquidity on, on the debt service, if we extend it, and, again, it's just refine, basic refinance, and you're, you're saving on the payment, and it's not recurring, it's not, it's not one-time revenue, because you're going to be saving on it going forward.
Annually.
You could use that instead of capital.
Exactly.
You could use it for police officers, because it wouldn't be one-time monies, right?
If we reduce our, if we reduce our debt service payments, there's more money available for other operating expenditures.
Even at ten percent.
Right. I think what we're going to find, however, is that there, you know, there's such a, you know, I think the superintendent or the receiver mentioned it earlier, they're spending an inordinate amount of money at the school department, fix our schools, there's a substantial need at these schools to do some. They're wasting, I would argue, or one would argue, that they're wasting a lot of annual operating costs to maintain their buildings when they could be perhaps spending it on children. I think the receiver has made a, a decision, he's got to get these buildings in, in order so that children can learn, and, but, you know, they really need some extensive work.
Yeah, and I don't think anybody's debating that point, I just think if they're sitting there unrefinanced, and if you refinance them and you can get a good amount of money back, load on our, on our debt, or even allow you to borrow a little bit more, because you extended some way that you deal with the debt in a different way, that even if we split the difference on what we get out of the positive net of all that stuff, that's, it would be better than what we're at today, where we're paying huge debt service, schools debt service, schools aren't being fixed, and we don't have the personnel.
Well, like I said, yeah, like I said, right now, we, we have savings of anywhere, depending on market conditions, about eighty to a hundred and twenty-five thousand, and I've asked our financial advisor to go forward with that and.
But that's, is that just the government bond side, not the school loan side?
That would be the, uh, there's nothing on the school loan side.
See, I don't, I don't, does, I don't know. They looked at it?
Yes, you know, I, twice. I've had a, I don't have the email in front of me, but there's a, there were two refunding opportunities. One would, one bond that saved us about seven thousand after costs, and one was, um, saving a little more. And they were both capital improvement pri, bonds, not the school construction bonds, um, on that listing. I don't have it in front of me, but, uh, they're all of the one, the school was listed first, and the general obligation bonds are next. It was a few of the, the older, uh, capital improvement bonds, general.
This will be the last question I ask on it. I'm sorry, I'm beating the dead horse on this. But, so you have an analysis on the school loans, whether or not there'd be any savings, and you got, they got none?
They got none.
Can I get that?
I'll ask First Southwest to put something together on the school loans. She identified the loans that there is an opportunity on.
Yeah, and tell her.
But she looked at all of the notes.
You know, tell her to be as dense as she wants on it. If she wants to send us over fifty pages, that'd be great, whatever it took her to figure it out, because I'd like to see how.
But it's, it's just a function of interest rates and what you're paying, and then, and then there are some restrictions on some of the debt, which, one of the ones that is called.
I just hate, I would just hate to.
They're not callable for, there's a period of time where we can ref, we really can't refinance it, uh, because they're not callable, and for another couple of years, where we can start the process now.
And she could explain all that stuff as long as she wants. I just don't wanna get an email back that says, no, there's none. So I wanted to get some information on how she got to that.
I'll request it.
Thank you. School budget. Uh, we had a discussion earlier about net school spending and whether or not we fall short of, um, seems like you guys chose the governor's budget, and we chose the senate budget, which is absolutely the farthest apart that we could possibly be. Um, and I asked the, our, um, our finance director whether or not he felt if we ended up anywhere in between those two, would we be short of our net school spending? The way we have it budgeted in our book, he said it would be, we'd be covered.
I believe you meet net school spending, uh, with, uh, the budget that's been proposed by the administration.
At a hundred percent?
At a hundred percent. Now, we're using some of it, again, to fix buildings, which, it's not what I wanna do, but morally, we've gotta do it, or we're gonna have huge financial problems five, ten years from now, and we've gotta fix these buildings for the kids.
Anybody else have any questions on the schools?
Thank you.
What we're seeing is that our, our city's cost is gonna be seven point three million dollars.
If we get, if the governor's budget passes, it'll be that much. But if the governor's budget passes, then we'll have a lot more money to, to do that with.
But if your governor's budget passes, we'll have a lot more money to do that with?
I think so. I just don't, I just don't think the governor's budget's gonna pass. He's got a lot of tax increases in there that I'm not really sure is gonna happen. But I don't think the, I don't think the senate wants, it's something, it's gonna be, it always ends up someplace in between.
We think so. You know, we're prepared, you know, we're, we've been in discussions that we recognize the needle may move one way or the other, and we'll take steps accordingly. And obviously, uh, when the final budget comes out, that will be reflective of what the final determination is for Beacon Hill.
Unless there's any other questions, I'm good. Sir Riley?
Thank you very much.
Bergeron, thank you for coming, and the staff, thank you all for being here. I think that's it.
The only other thing on here is that, uh, charter and choice schools, what is that?
That's a function of the debt of, um, what page you have in?
I don't know what page it's on. It's just listed here as.
I think it's part of the schools locate allocations.
Charter and choice schools.
That's not in the book. Remus, Serenello?
City and Council.
Not in the book, this, um, charter and choice schools.
I, I think it, uh, they bud, I think the reason why it showed up, there are a couple of pages for it, because it showed up in the historical data. Uh, I think it was two thousand eleven, uh, they budgeted the, the cherry sheet assessments. Uh, we haven't done that. You're not required to budget those, and uh, so that's, it showed up in your report only because we're, we have from FY eleven, twelve, and thirteen. But there's, there's nothing budgeted this year.
And what they did this year is they rolled it all back into the school budget.
In the last few years, it's been done that way.
Uh, I, thank you. That's true. I did email, we did not hear back. We have asked about that matter. My guess is that when I'm here tomorrow, do it, because we got police, fire. Um, so just as a point of information, tomorrow night, we have the cemetery, the airport, the police department, the fire department, uh, which also includes electrical, electoral inspection, and the city council. And that'll be here tomorrow at six thirty.
I got a notice from the, um, city attorney, city clerk, we have a special meeting on the thirteenth.
Yeah, the special meeting on thirteenth is, I'm sorry, go ahead.
That's just a four, they're not, uh, a public hearing, right?
Correct.
A public hearing.
That gives it enough time to be out in the budget, in the, um, and get posted on, um, in the media by, um, by the rules and the ordinance and state law.
Okay.
We won't be, the public hearing on the budget will be on June twenty-sixth.
Yeah.
That's Wednesday, June twenty-sixth. I know in the, the notes here says Monday, but that's a typo. So Wednesday, June twenty-sixth, a city council meeting for public hearing and vote on the budget.
Okay.
Uh, seeing, in a, any other information, I'd like to entertain a motion to, to, um, to recess.
To move.
Second it, others in favor?
Aye.
Y'all just have it. Thank you.